Okay, you guys ready? Okay, I'll call the order, the, I'll call to order the Sparks City Council CIP Workshop of April twenty seven, two thousand and twenty with a, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Blosson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams. Absent. City Manager Coots.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask Doug Thornard, can we go ahead without an attorney besides yourself?
Uh, why don't you let me run across the hall and see what the whole about this?
Okay.
I, I think we can go ahead and, and continue through the pro forma part of our agenda before we get to business and Doug will certainly be back with.
Okay, so Lisa, before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, would you read the white paper, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Good morning and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, all City of Sparks' public meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until at least April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. The safety of Sparks' residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings. It does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to any of these factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and seven point one. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number provided on the workshop agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. You will be muted upon entry to the virtual waiting room. Our clerk's office staff will admit you to the meeting. If you would like to speak during items four or seven point one, press star nine when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the telephone number you are calling from. Please be listening for the clerk to read off your telephone number. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called upon to speak for public comments, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us, and the meeting will now begin. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Uh, we'll, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, Charlene, would you lead us, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Um, public comment, is there any public comment, Lisa?
I am looking for that right now, Mr. Mayor. Once again, if you have public comment and you would like to make an opening, uh, public comment statement, please press star nine on your telephone at this time. And I'm seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, um, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion. Just jump in there, you don't have to.
Move to approve, Abbott.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Abbott and a second from Mr. Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 I don't vote, I don't know what I just did. So it passes, it passes unanimously. Okay, agenda review and discussion of the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. And that would be Neil.
Oh, I'm good, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll kick it off. Uh, under, under a normal year, this is a workshop we would have had four weeks ago today. That was our original plans to have it done. At the, that last Monday in, in March, and, uh, so that, you know, we got the information in front of you, you had a fair amount of time to chew on it before we, uh, we asked you to consider it at a city council meeting, then the COVID nineteen emergency hit us, um, threw us a pretty good curveball as we're on, on many, many fronts, this being one of them. So staff has been working hard for the last several weeks, actually, in retooling the, the presentation that you're going to see today to, to make sure that it fit this Zoom environment that we, that we find ourselves in today. Uh, and I, and I'm pleased to report that I, that I think what you're going to see is, uh, is, is not only thorough, but, uh, but going to be well presented. The graphics work quite well for, for the, the platform that we find ourselves on today. So I'm excited for them to, to have the opportunity to talk to you about the, the planning that's actually been going on in every department in the city for, you know, about the last six months as, as we look to update this program. Please keep in mind that this, you know, the lion's share of this work was done in a, in a pre-COVID environment, so very much like the budget that we're asking you to consider in your council agenda later today. You know, this is a, this is a planning document that we are asking for you to, to review this morning and then potentially consider, uh, this afternoon, and that will be entirely your call, as we've talked about already. Um, but, you know, with that said, there will certainly be opportunity for questions and answers as we, as we're going through this and, and we can, we can get to some of the specific, you know, points that we've talked about, uh, that might need to change as a result of, of the emergency. And I know that, you know, the turf at Golden Eagle and asking ourselves if we could perhaps put that off for a year to free up some, some cash to make it through the, the economic slump that we're at the front end of now, we will certainly have opportunity to talk about that as we get into the presentation today. Uh, but with, with that, I want to, I want to turn it over to Brian Kason, he is our Capital Projects Manager, and he is going to lead us through a, a presentation here today. I know he's got lots of folks that are, that are going to help him with, with certain pieces of it, but, uh, it's really Brian and his staff show to go from here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Let me, uh, share my screen here.
And if any of the council wants to jump in at any time, just do it, don't wait for me to call on you.
Got it. Hey, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to share my screen and it's not allowing me to do it.
Hmm. Hey, Rich, we were just looking at that.
Oh, there we go, I got it. I got it. All right, uh, we'll get going here. Uh, good morning, Mayor and members of the City Council. For the record, my name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. We're here again this year to, to go through the, the the proposed CIP for, for this upcoming fiscal year. Of course, these are unprecedented times and, and, uh, a different way of presenting it, but I think we've got a great, uh, plan for you guys going forward. And as Neil said, we've spent a tremendous amount of time on this and, and, uh, hopefully you'll be pleased and we'll see what happens going forward. But, uh, this plan, of course, is for, we're going to be focused on just this upcoming fiscal year in this presentation. You do have the full five-year plan in front of you, and, and certainly if you have any questions on this coming year or any other part of it, please feel free to ask. We do have, uh, three other presenters that will be helping out today. Amber Sosa, the Transportation Manager, Rich Brown, the IT Manager, and Kevin Porter, the Utility Manager. And with that, we've got just over a twenty-eight point five million dollar proposed plan. I do want to, as I've done in the last couple of years, uh, just go over just truly all of the, the, the team effort that's involved and all the, the months of planning that go into this. Um, we really do spend a lot of, lots and lots of time trying to come up with the best plan possible and, and, uh, just represent the, the citizens as, as best we can and, and keep up with all our facilities and infrastructure. And I just want to thank everyone involved from all the different departments to consultants and the, the contractors that, that help us out with this, and all the staff that, that spend countless hours working on this. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it. And then just touching on how the plan supports the comprehensive plan, uh, we have four parts, the comprehensive plan vision. Of course, having a livable, sustainable, and healthy community, which ties into, uh, just having a, a, uh, integrated connectivity and maintaining our, our roadways and bike paths. Um, just a couple of pictures of projects that have been done over the last couple of years. Um, the regional parks, uh, we have a, a lot of really nice parks out there. I mean, this picture right here, Golden Eagle, just hopefully we'll get back to this at some point where we'll be able to get out there and, and play some softball and, and enjoy the outdoors and enjoy the beautiful area we're in. Um, maintaining Victorian Square, making sure that, uh, all the, the wonderful events that we plan throughout the year. Are, uh, that area is maintained to, to keep up with those events and make them function as best as possible. And then lastly, the goal of, uh, with the community facilities and services, making sure we maintain our, our facilities, making sure that we keep up with them, keep them up in, in great condition, and maximize, uh, their utilization and, and, uh, just keep up with them the best we can. And then with that, I'm going to, uh, let Amber go in and talk about the, uh, Fund fourteen oh one, the, the transportation fund.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. I'm Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. As Brian said, I'm going to walk through some of our proposed transportation projects for FY twenty-one. In the coming year, we have just over three point three million dollars in projects planned, and the funding source for this fund is largely fuel tax and franchise fees. The graph that you see towards the bottom of your screen shows a quick history of the PCI in Sparks. Now, the PCI stands for Pavement Condition Index. This is essentially a rating of the surface condition of every road that we have in Sparks. We have approximately of our, a third of our city roads are redone, reanalyzed every year, which puts us on a three-year rotating schedule to have all of our streets reanalyzed to update this rating. Now, that rating is done on a scale of zero to one hundred. So to give you an idea, a one hundred would be a perfectly paved brand-new road, whereas zero would be a road calling itself a paved road, but might be more similar to a Nevada dirt road. What this PCI does is it allows us to group our streets into different programs, different areas where we're looking to, to help our roads. A zero to fifty would put that street into the rehabilitation category, which means we're completely redoing the entire roadway section. A fifty-one to a sixty-four would put the street into our corrective maintenance program. What that means is that the street probably needs a large, a large amount of patching, perhaps crack seal, perhaps even small areas of repaving. And then the streets that are landing in that sixty-five to a hundred category are into our preventative maintenance program. What that means is that we are trying to prevent the deterioration of those roads, and we do that through slurry steel, uh, preventative maintenance applications, essentially adding wearing courses to the tops of those streets. So to look back at that graph one more time, you'll see that the overall PCI for the City of Sparks declined by three points last year. Next slide, please, Brian. To dive into those PCIs just a little bit more, you'll see that we have the, the City of Sparks divided into five areas. The map to your left kind of shows the boundaries of those areas. You'll see Area One is Western Sparks, Area Two tends to be more east, Area Three is south of I eighty, Area Four moves north, and Area Five are the northernmost streets in Sparks. Uh, one thing to keep in mind here with Area Three is that those are largely our industrial roads, and those are maintained by the RTC, by the Regional Transportation Commission. So looking to the graph that you see on your right, you see those areas and the PCIs, the history of their PCIs for the last few years, and you'll see all areas of our city are experiencing the same decline that we saw overall, and all the areas lost anywhere between two to five PCI points. Next slide, please. So in FY twenty-one, in our rehabilitation program, we're proposing a street unit one rehabilitation project that's outlined that you see on your right. The streets that we would like to include are highlighted in red, and to feel, to orientate yourself, you'll see Prater Way just to the north and McCarran just to the west. Now, the average PCI of this unit is a thirty-five, and it also has extreme deterioration in the sidewalk and curb and gutter. Next slide, please. And FY twenty-one, we are also proposing a second street rehabilitation project, Unit Two. Um, again, you'll see that the streets we'd like to include are highlighted in red, with McCarran being just to the left of the west, and the major cross street to the north would be York Way. This unit has an average PCI of thirty-nine, and again, has a lot of crumbling sidewalk and curb and gutter. Next slide, please. So moving into our next group of streets, that fifty to a hundred, which combines our corrective and our preventative maintenance programs, this is the project that we're proposing in FY twenty-one. You'll see that it kind of spans the city and that graph's quite a bit bigger, but the streets that we intend to include are there labeled in red. Next slide, please. And with this being about roads, we're going to take a slight detour and introduce a guest speaker. I'm going to turn you over to John Martini for just a couple of slides.
Thank you, Amber. Uh, good morning, Mr. Mayor and, and members of council. Uh, I am John Martini, your Assistant City Manager. Um, we are going to take a slight detour here. Amber, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I was, I couldn't tell if I was on or not, I'm sorry. Uh, so over the last few years, we've had, uh, a, a, a pretty good amount of, of citizen contact with staff requesting, um, increased levels of street maintenance and safety programs. I know as members of the council, you guys receive a lot of emails, um, you know, what can the city do to slow people down? What can we do about potholes? So I want to take a minute with the council. Um, I reached out to, to staff to start looking at how we could do this, and I'm going to offer up some information for you today. Uh, before I start, I want to let you all know that this is not for a decision today, this is informational only, and for future discussion with the city manager as we move forward through the process. So what are the issues that, um, that we're getting calls for services on, that you're seeing in emails, that I'm sure you're hearing about them in the grocery store? Next slide, please, Brian. So it's, uh, they are issues like pothole repairs, next slide. Uh, those deep pavement cracks that we've got, uh, throughout the city that we get calls on quite a bit. Uh, next slide, Brian. And then, of course, sidewalk repairs. Uh, this is an example of, of, uh, a sidewalk that's heaved due to heat that we do see in the summertime. Um, often we get a lot of complaints about the sidewalks unsafe, uh, and they get called in or sent to you as council members through email, and we must respond to them. Uh, next slide, Brian. And then in our traffic safety program, uh, here are two, um, techniques that seem to be extraordinarily popular, uh, for our roads that, uh, um, our citizens are concerned about. I'm sure that you've heard a lot from them. Uh, two techniques that we've used here of late, of course, on the left of, the left picture is a radar speed sign that does seem to have some effectiveness with slowing people down by making them aware. And then, of course, on the right is the rectangular radar beacon, that, uh, we do have some folks out there that would like to see these at every crosswalk on all of our arterials. Next slide. So what we're really experiencing from our citizens and, and from the requests that we're seeing, both at public works, maintenance and with, inside of our transportation program, uh, is a request for the level of service in maintenance and safety programs to go up. Next slide, please. So with that, I, I went to Ron Corman and John Erickson and Amber Sosa and said, okay, what could we do? What could we do to pick up our ability to provide service for maintenance as well as for safety programs? And this is what came back in this year's new needs request cycle. Um, Ron let me know that we'd need another traffic maintenance worker with a utility vehicle. Uh, street, streets laborers, um, those laborers are the bottom of our career path track. So those are the guys that would be out fixing the potholes in the sidewalk, that need a utility vehicle. And then Amber said we need to increase traffic safety funding by about a hundred thousand dollars to start, uh, getting ahead of some of the requests that quite a few, uh, have come in, and actually they've come in through the council, Amber. The fiscal twenty, year twenty-one cost would be about five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, because there are vehicles included in this request, the years after that fall down, because we, you know, there, it's a lower cost per year after that at about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year. Next slide, Brian. Uh, so what is in front of you right now is a pie chart of, in this fiscal year, fiscal twenty, these are expenditures, where, where we're spending the money in Fund fourteen oh one. Sixty percent is in our capital improvements program, about thirty-three percent goes to personnel costs, and then we've got seven percent of the budget is services and supplies. Next slide. So if we move forward with those new needs, we would effectively be moving about nine percent of the expenditures from the capital improvements program into personnel costs. Next slide, please. So that in effect, to raise the, the level of service that we're hearing a request for, for maintenance and safety programs, will cause a drop in the level of service in our street improvement program. Amber just walked you through the PCI numbers, um, so that, that's fresh in your mind. We are seeing a decrease citywide in PCI. Next slide, please. So the question is, okay, if we move this money around, what won't get done? And as I show you the next slides, please remember that, uh, I keep asking Amber Sosa to, you know, if this money was gone, what would disappear from your program? She keeps reminding me. Uh, John, we have to kind of take this year by year, but I'll give you my best guess. So this is based on what we know today, but it could certainly change as PCIs roll in, in future years, uh, the, the PCI, um, data. Uh, next slide, please. So in fiscal twenty-one, we would eliminate one of our alley rehabilitation programs. This alley is located north of Glendale Avenue, uh, between Rock and Fifteenth, just south of Shaver. Next slide. In fiscal twenty-three, we would see the elimination of a neighborhood rehab project of about a hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet. Next slide. That project is, is shown here on the graph. Again, this is, this is Amber doing her best to rub the crystal ball as to what, where the program would go. Uh, you see these streets are just above our, uh, Victorian Plaza Circle, um, and span, uh, up past Prater, just north of Prater, uh, between, generally between Pyramid and Fifteenth Street. Next slide, please. Then in fiscal twenty-five, we would eliminate another neighborhood rehab project of about two hundred and seventy thousand square feet of roadway rehab. Um, next slide, Brian. You can see the streets here, uh, estimated loss in fiscal twenty-five, located basically, uh, east of Sullivan Way, west of Fifteenth and north of Prater. Next slide, please. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. I just wanted to, that is informational, uh, based on requests and comments from the council as to, uh, what we perceive as, as a request to pick up, um, funding and basically level of service in maintenance and safety programs. I hope it clearly shows that with that, there would be a decrease in the capital improvements plan, basically our street rehabilitation programs. Uh, again, this is not a decision point, this is informational to the council for options, uh, as you discuss it with the city manager. And with that, I will turn it back to Amber Sosa and get off the detour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martini. Uh, jumping back in, another way that we are able to accomplish street rehabilitation is through the City of Sparks' CDPG, Community Development Block Grant. Uh, this is something that the City of Sparks with, works through with HUD, the U.S. Department Housing and Urban Development Program, and the areas that we are allowed to apply this grant are largely defined by different census tracts. And a part of that plan is that we show HUD our five-year plan. So what you see in front of you is where we hope to go in the next five years. This is all depending on how big those grants are and how much money we're able to get. Uh, you'll see towards the center to the bottom of your screen is Prater Way, and the area we have defined for the next three years is there in blue. Next slide, please. And yet, one other way that we handle road rehabilitation is working with our utility department. Um, our curb gutter and sidewalk projects are funded through the Utility Enterprise Fund, and these projects are selected largely because the curb and gutter on these streets is so bad that it's preventing normal water from just running off the roadway. So it becomes a utility issue, uh, when you tear up the curb and gutter, you tear up the sidewalk, you tear up the road. So it really makes sense to marry these concerns together and put them into one project. This larger map that you see, if I can direct you to the gray, those are the streets, oop, sorry, one back, please. Okay, those are areas that you see in gray are streets that have been accomplished through this program in the past, and the, the colored streets are where we're hoping to go in the next five years. Next slide, please. To zoom into those areas just a little bit, you'll see an FY twenty-one, we are hoping to rehab portions of G Street and Shriver Boulevard that are there depicted in purple. With that, if there's not any questions, I will turn you over to Kevin Porter for the utility section.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Kevin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Amber, for the transition, and members of council, for the record, Kevin Porter, your utility manager. And over the next few slides, I will discuss the planned utility projects that we would like to highlight to the council for fiscal year twenty-one. The first slide will cover a couple of sanitary sewer projects, and, uh, the first project that's, uh, listed in the bullet there is our planned, uh, manhole rehabilitation project. Um, Brian, if you'll do one slide for me, please, thank you. In the, uh, the picture you see to the right, it's actually a, a video that, uh, I'd like to provide some context to, and then we'll get into, to play in the video, uh, for council's, uh, review. What you're looking at here is a sanitary sewer manhole. This is approximately ten feet deep, obviously looking in from the top where the manhole lid is down into the bottom where the base is. And you'll notice at the very bottom, there is a channel which we call the invert, and then there's a slight bend in that, and what this manhole is doing is connecting two eight-inch pipes that have a bend in the pipe, and that's obviously where the, the bend in that invert comes from. So in a normal manhole that's performing correctly, we just expect to see flow down in that invert from one pipe to the other. What you'll notice in this photo, and then you'll notice, uh, more clearly in the video, that above that bend in the pipe, which Brian just circled, is, uh, is a, a section in the, the joint of the base of the manhole and the, the barrel section or the wall of the manhole. And you'll notice through the video that there's, uh, quite a bit amount of, uh, groundwater that's actually infiltrating into the manhole. And, uh, I think at this point, Brian, let's go ahead and play the video and allow council to see what we're talking about. All right, thank you, Brian. So you'll, you'll notice by, through that video that there's, there's, uh, a significant amount of water in, and when, when we've studied it, we actually think that in this case, in this manhole, we're seeing more water come in, groundwater infiltrating in than actually sanitary sewer water, the wastewater that's flowing through that, that inverse section. And what this really does, what this really means is that there's water infiltrating into our collection system that's taking up capacity that could otherwise be used to transport wastewater, and it's also taking up, unnecessarily taking up capacity at Tumworf, and it, and it costs money to treat this water at Tumworf. And so this sanitary sewer manhole, uh, rehabilitation project aims to, uh, seal these manholes up and, uh, mitigate, reduce as much as possible that groundwater that's, that's infiltrating in. And, uh, we're actually, we have a project that, uh, was similar to this, that's actually scoped in FY twenty, and, uh, we will be bringing that to, to council for consider, consideration in, in the very near future. Uh, slide, please, Brian.
Hey, Kevin, can I, Donald, or Abbott, Councilman Abbott, real quick, um, on the manhole rehab, is that, I guess, how many do we get for that? And is that a project we can, are we able to like block it off and just seal them in place, or what, what is?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Councilman Abbott, that's a, a, a tremendous, terrific question. For the, uh, the project that you see listed here for approximately, uh, the, the two hundred and twenty-five, uh, thousand dollars worth, we're looking on the order of around, uh, thirty, anywhere from thirty to forty-five manholes, depending on the pricing, uh, as always, for what are, are the contractors will bid these on. And the way that this rehabilitation, uh, technique is performed to answer the second part of your question is that uh, there, there is no excavation around the outside or into the street that is required. What happens is, is that a contractor will do a confined space entry and enter into the manhole through the manhole lid, and then they will apply a, uh, epoxy-type grout to seal the, seal the water up, and then they'll finish with an epoxy coating on the inside. So it almost turns out, i- it does turn out looking like a brand-new, almost, um, uh, like a, uh, it's an epoxy painted surface, so it doesn't even look like concrete on the inside, but it's a, a watertight and corrosion-resistant material that is coated on the complete inside of the manhole.
Thanks, Kevin.
Absolutely. The next project we'll discuss is the, uh, McCarran Boulevard Sewer Upgrade Project, and you'll And you'll notice on the right side of your screen, we've got an exhibit there showing the extent. This is a sanitary sewer upgrade project that was identified in our sewer master plan and will ultimately upsize the sewer line that we have coming down McCarran from Greenbray down to Prater Way. And council will recall that we actually augmented a portion of this project into the current fiscal year, fiscal year 20, with the RTC project that has just recently begun along Prater Way between McCarran Boulevard and Sparks Boulevard. And so this project that we've identified here for fiscal year 21 is the complement to that project. And that will ultimately complete the entire project as was identified in our sewer master plan. Slide, please. The next couple of projects we'll discuss are storm drain related projects. The first one being the Marina Lake Level Control and Pipeline and Pump Station Rehabilitation. What this is, is the floating dock pump station that is on the southeast corner of the Marina is used to move a significant amount of water out of the Marina when we have large storm events or when we experience significant groundwater infiltration into the Marina. And what this allows the city to do is to very quickly maintain and control the lake surface elevation of the Marina. We can't allow the Marina to raise over a specified limit. Otherwise, it begins flooding basements and flooding underwater or underground infrastructure in the area. And the infrastructure that's in place is basically original, been there over 20 years, and it's reaching the end of its service life. And so this project will go in and renew that infrastructure and renew the service life along with that. Slide, please. The next project we'll discuss is the East Prater Way and Vista Boulevard Storm Drain Pump Station Project. The exhibit you'll see to the right of your screen shows the area primarily between Sparks Boulevard and Vista Boulevard along Prater Way. And you may recall that over, it seems like almost every two, two and a half years for the last several, we've seen a summertime thunderstorm come in, drop a significant amount of water in terms of rainfall in the paw rots. And this water paws and collects at the Vista intersection, Vista-Prater intersection. And ultimately, we see on the order of a 10 to 12-hour impact where that intersection's closed to the traveling public. And so this area was identified in our storm drain master plan as needing to address the drainage. Originally, we had looked at just upgrading the storm drain that was there. And in fact, we approved, council approved a fiscal year 19 project for the storm drain piece along Prater. And now what this fiscal year 21 project is, is a complement to that storm drain project. And it's going to add a pump station at the actual intersection to allow us to force a significant more amount of water through our storm drain infrastructure to the Nor Truckee Drain to drain that intersection. And ultimately, the aim of the project is to mitigate those almost two, two and a half year reoccurring flood events that we see there. And the big impact we're trying to avoid here is obviously the impact to the traveling public. But when you think about the shareholders at that intersection, you've got Northern Nevada Medical Center to the east. You've got the renowned urgent care at the intersection. There's a dialysis center, a senior care living facility. And then we also have our police department on the west side of the intersection. And when that intersection's impassable to vehicles or to the traveling public, it just, there's a significant impact that's felt by those stakeholders. And we're aiming to mitigate that. Next slide, please, Brian. Thank you. This is the last slide I'll cover today. This project is a design and right away acquisition project for a complimentary project to the Nor Truckee Drain Realignment Project. Originally, this was included with the scoping of the original Nor Truckee Drain Realignment Project, but it was held off for a future CIP due to the maintenance access issues. And then also the right away component of this project. What this project will aim to do and what this actual fiscal year 21 CIP will do is to design a channel, box culvert channel on the alignment that you see on the right side of your screen there. Basically, just north of I-80, it wraps around the Rail City through the Rail City Nursery there and then back to Lillard and close to the water park. That section is still open channel, but it's almost impossible to access, impossible to maintain. And so the scope of the project is to construct concrete box culvert up to the west side of where the blue, the blue line starts. And then to provide maintenance access for our crews to be able to get down to the front of the box. And then also a debris screen and catching system to allow us to prevent large type of debris from entering into the box culvert, which ultimately makes its way under, beneath I-80 and then underground through the industrial area out to the Truckee River. And with that, that wraps up the utility portion for fiscal year 21. Unless there are any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to hand it back over to Brian Kason.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. This is Councilman Dare. Just real quick, over on the York and McCarran area and Bering, just in that whole thing, it gets flooded there. Is there any talk of what we want to do to try to help that? I mean, I remember when that happens there, when those people come in other homes, they can't even, whatever road that is, I think it's York on the right side. I don't even know how to get in out of their house because it's so flooded when that hits. Is there any work on that even in the years to come?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Dare. There's actually a project that was under design now that was approved in fiscal year 20. For it's primarily the area that we've scoped is around the Bering area and Goldie Way, north and south of Goldie. And that's part of that, that real flat area in there that I believe you're referring to. And in the winter time, long sustained storm events, we just see ponding there because the Nor Truckee Drain gets so high that the system can't drain out to it. And so we've been working with Odyssey Engineering to get a storm drain improvement project designed there. They're nearing, they are nearing their 90%, 90% submittal. And I don't have an anticipated council date to bring that forward, but it is, it will be sometime this summer that we will bring that project forward to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Now we're moving on to Fund 1404, the Capital Projects Fund. Typically, this fund is, this is funded through a 2 and a half percent general fund transfer. We, and along with marijuana fees, business license fees for the IT hardware and software portions of the fund. We've broken it into three different funds, 1404A, 1404B, and 1404C. We are looking at a reduction in this fund this coming fiscal year of just over $1.1 million for new needs. We do have a total proposed amount of just over $1 million is what we're proposing to projects for this coming fiscal year. And 1404A, the facilities portion of the fund, looking at replacing some SWAT equipment for the police department that expires periodically, and they got to keep up on that to keep their staff safe and make sure they're properly equipped. And then we've got the Police Department HVAC System Boiler and Chiller Replacement Project. And this is for design only to be prepared for whenever we do have funding available to construct that portion of the project. Currently, we are working on a project throughout the facility that's replacing different valve boxes and helping with the airflow. But we need to go in there and look at the actual part of the system. That system is aging and in need of replacement in the near future. And then we've got the Police Department Maintenance Garage Roof Improvements. That's a, there's a little maintenance building behind the existing Police Department Facility. We have had some problems with water infiltrating and damaging the structure on the exterior walls. So we need to take a look at that and make sure we're getting in there and keeping up on that building before the damage gets too far along. And then finally, Fire Station Number Two. We've got a restroom remodel project planned that goes hand in hand with the current project we've got going on where we're remodeling the dorm rooms. We've actually got the architect going in there and doing a full design of that restroom and dorm room area. We're going to get more efficiency by including this restroom remodel project with that other project. So better cost, less effect on the staff that's there. We can go in and get it done all at once rather than having to come in two different times. So ultimately, we've got a proposed FY21 cost to 1404A and the amount of $640,000. With that, I will let Rich Brown come in and talk about the IT portion of the fund. He'll go through and talk about what he's got, what he's up to. Rich, are you there?
Thank you, Brian. I was muted. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. I'm Rich Brown, your IT manager for the record. And today I'm going to walk you through a quick little update on CIP for IT as well as a quick review of where IT sits currently. Next slide, Brian. So for the current fiscal year, we've been working on a handful of projects in major systems and some information for you on our hardware. So in Major Systems, we're implementing a new Parks and Rec software to replace our aging rec track suite. And that is currently going very well with a scheduled go live in early July. And that is, as mentioned, on track. Next project was back in November, council approved a project for a real-time backup system within the city. And that system is now in place and functioning very well. Next project is a bit of a surprise project that fell into place in the end of March as part of the shutdown that came about because of the COVID-19. And as we, where we sit right now is 97 users in the city are working from home or remotely in some form. And that constitutes the bulk of the city staff who can work from home. And that was a fairly big lift in fairly short order. So I'm very grateful to IT who worked diligently to get that done. Moving on, we're looking to roll out a Wi-Fi expansion of fire, which is now done, as well as adding Wi-Fi to the recreation gym. All of the infrastructure for that, the recreation piece is in place. So the only thing we have left to do is actually install the access points and turn it along. Next project was, there's a, at the end of calendar 2019, a new building access system was put in place in the City Hall. And that system is in place now and all access has been assigned. And this past month, that system was expanded to the Public Works Maintenance Yard and Garage to cover all their doors. And that system is now in place as well. Last, but certainly not least, will be an IT asset system, which will be the first one we've ever had that tracks all of our digital assets throughout the city. And this allows us to do things like maintain a good inventory, do better forecasting on things like our refresh program and potential failure rates throughout the city. Moving on to the hardware and infrastructure side of things. Our data center, the server room back here in IT is in very good shape. This will be the first year in my career where there hasn't been a piece of equipment or hardware that needs replacement back there. And that entire room is at the current state of the art. So I'm very happy to report that. And that will lead us very well into the slow migration to the cloud for our recruiting resources in the back room. I spoke to you a little bit about that back in February, I believe, as part of the departmental update. So we're still looking to do that. And on the desktop front, this fiscal year 21 will be the last year where we have recession era systems slated to be refreshed. So the last of those systems that are, that are still here from the recession should be refreshed and moved out the door. So I'm very happy to report that. And last but not least, on the hardware side is IT's looking to move away from sole vendor usage. Historically, we've been an HP shop. And we're going to slowly look at moving away from that as a purposeful decision. The idea being we want to look at all vendors, be that we're spending the money as best we can and that we're getting the best equipment for our dollars. We'll be looking at additional vendors like Lenovo, Dell possibly, and Apple devices. So that's where we sit. That's the general recap where we sit for the current fiscal year. Next slide, Brian. So this is just a quick update on what do all our computers in City Hall need. There are three major things that most computers in the city need. One is Microsoft Windows, so that the computers have an actual operating system. Office 365, which are the productivity applications you're all aware of, Word, Excel, Outlook, et cetera. A new addition this year is the Arctic Wolf Intrusion Detection System. And what that is, it's a small piece of software similar to antivirus, not a replacement for, but similar to, that monitors for abnormal behavior. When we first install the system, it takes a little bit of time to determine what's normal behavior, system to system. And then from that point forward, it starts monitoring for strange things. And these systems are incredibly effective at helping us identify potential security issues as they crop up so that we don't get stuck in a place where we're hit by intruders for a long period of time before we even realize it. So I'm excited that that's rolling out as we speak. And of course, staff computers, the actual applications, they use very by department. But the three above I just mentioned are the ones that are applied citywide. Brian, next slide, please. So here's the licensing cost per seat for each of those three products I just mentioned. Arctic Wolf Intrusion Detections is $62 a year per computer. And then the Office 365 can get, gets broken up into two different sections. For the full suite where you have Word, Excel, Outlook, et cetera, running on your desktop, that's $278 a year. For the users who don't have the full suite, people who just typically have email only, have the $69 here option. And of course, like mentioned in the previous slide, different business applications through different departments will change the actual base licensing cost depending on what they're using. But the pieces that apply to all city computers are the three above. And that is that. So Brian, next slide, please. Looking forward into FY21, just a quick recap per fiscal policy number three. IT hardware and software is funded as a portion of revenues from the general fund in addition to contributions from other funds and our marijuana business licensing fees. In the coming slides, I'm going to go over our major systems plan for fiscal 21, as well as our hardware refresh plan for fiscal 21. The major system spend for fiscal 21 is going to be $285,000 in total. That's from across all funds and all fees. And for hardware, that's going to be $117,300 in total. Next slide, Brian. This slide is just a quick little snapshot of the major technical partners we have in place to do the business of the city. This is by no means all of the technical vendors we use, but these all have to contribute in doing the business of the city for the various departments. Next slide, Brian. So for the major systems projects we have coming for FY21, as always, we have our traffic management systems. We're continually rolling out upgrades and hardware replacement for that, for that management system. We're looking to expand Wi-Fi at the Public Works Maintenance Yard. Move over to PD, we're going to look to help them expand their Axon camera system to include their interview rooms. In the financial area, we're going to look to upgrade both our payroll and our timekeeping system. And the majority of those upgrades are going to be in support of getting our fire department off of the tedious paper time cards that are on now and into our existing timekeeping system, which is a system called Nova Time. We're also looking to do some upgrades to our document management system on base to further streamline and optimize how the city clerk's office does the document management business they do day to day. Next project's going to be a new city website. IT will be working with Julie Duel to roll out a brand new website for the city. And we're looking to start that work towards the end of May, early June, and complete that hopefully by November holiday season of calendar. complete that hopefully by November holiday season of calendar twenty. And last but not least, we're going to be looking to utility billing software, Springbrook, to their cloud based solution. And we'll look at starting that sometime in the last half of calendar twenty with completion, hopefully sometime in late spring of twenty one. And that concludes what I have for major systems. Brian, next slide, please. This is a quick overview of our hardware refresh for fiscal twenty one. As I mentioned a few slides ago, our data center is in great shape. I have no hardware being slated to be replaced there because everything is relatively new. But on the desktop side, we're looking at fifty four systems scattered across the attorney's office, the community services office, finance, fire and management services. And the graph there shows how that's going to be rolled out. Next slide, Brian. And this is just a quick reminder is how we, how we do our refresh. These lifespans across these devices tend to just track towards warranties. If you look at that, most of the things we do here, the warranties for these devices track with our refresh. That's so that we don't get into a state where we're constantly dealing with broken devices. And with that, next slide. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, I'll turn over.
Questions or comments?
I had a question.
Go ahead, Charlene.
I was curious, and I know we're basing everything we do today, including our budget, not really knowing what the impacts of this COVID situation is going to be. But just curious, obviously, the marijuana money could change dramatically with delivery only, and that should be lower than we think. Do we still, like with budget, we just have the flexibility to adjust depending on what comes in, how we're addressing it? And maybe that's not for Rich, maybe that's for Brian or for Neil or for Jeff.
Yeah, I think that's actually either for me or Jeff, and I think we both answered it about the same way. And Jeff will jump in here and correct me if I start to get it wrong. And that, you know, this, this really is a budget document that we will then manage to. You know, again, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we would, we would be potentially overspending our budget. That's where we get into budget violations and we get in trouble with the state. But we fully expect that we aren't going to see the full revenues that we anticipated when we built this plan. This is just, this will give us something to work against, if you will. Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that's exactly it. You know, this and the budget in general are going to be treated just like that, a planning document. You know, for creating the world as we thought it was going to be and then addressing the needs that we were anticipating. So this gives us, again, the flexibility to, you know, spend the budget dollars, you know, where we need most as this unfolds, so.
Okay, thank you.
Real choices. This is Paul Anderson. I do have a question. I noticed on the list of vendors, you list one with the fleet management software. Is that like a GPS type program?
I believe that's one of its capabilities, yes, but it's also more of kind of like a maintenance tracking software. I think that's its primary role. In addition to, it also plays a role in helping with the depreciation of those assets.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Rich. Move on to Fund fourteen oh five. This is another fund we typically use for facilities, and it's funded through Ad Valerum, which is essentially property tax, property tax distributed by the state. We've got several projects that we're looking at in this fund, and one of them being the City Ride rekeying and security improvements that have been ongoing for the last couple of years or so. This is to slowly expand throughout all of our, all of our major buildings to improve the keying infrastructure along with improving security improvements. And then we got Fire Station Number Three carpet replacement. The carpet is really deteriorated in that facility, and we're looking at replacing that carpet. The maintenance admin restroom remodel design, going through and make, designing that this year and hopefully getting, constructing that in the next year or two. And then the maintenance garage lean to building, basically a cover to prolong the life of some of the equipment that's out there at the maintenance yard that they can park underneath that, that new lean, underneath the lean to building. And then the Deer Park boiler and water heater replacement, that both of those components are aging. They're starting to wear out due to the chemicals that, that just pool environments have, excuse me. And so we need to go in there and replace that boiler and water heater and make sure we're keeping up on that facility because it is a really good facility for the, for the community. And then the Police Department records area remodel. This is to remodel a space with, in the records area to add more basically cubicles and office space to allow for expansion of that facility, especially with the potential new needs of new police officers and that sort of thing. And then with that, there's a total cost proposed of roughly five hundred thousand dollars. The next fund is Fund fourteen oh two. This is funded through franchise, franchise fees, the GERP rental and lease fees, along with marijuana and licensing fees. We've broken this into, we've got the primary part of the fund that is for the majority of city park facilities, the basically that like the Larity Johnson and Rec Center, that sort of thing. And then we've got a second part of it that's actually for Golden Eagle to try and track those costs individually. In the primary fund, we've got a project for the Marina Wall Rehab South Project. This is at the Marina on the south side, but the wall is deteriorating and in need of repair. This does somewhat go hand in hand with Kevin's project that he talked about where they're replacing the pipe for the level control system at the Marina. So I'll be working closely with him on this project. And then the Marina North Beach Access Road Repair, that, that road provides maintenance access to the beach and to that northern part of the Marina. And it has basically eroded over time, and so we're going to go in there and make sure that road's up to, up to date and basically allowing maintenance proper, adequate access to the north beach area. This is a map showing those two projects I just noted to the south is that line, as Kevin had shown on his map for the pipeline. And then the little red comma looking line on the north side, that's, that's the maintenance access road. And then Golden Eagle, of course, we've got the synthetic turf replacement for Field Nine. This is the plan going forward. That is the field that's really in need of replacement for this, for the next round here, for eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And then we've got a really important component, the annual turf maintenance contract. This goes in and not only keeps up on the fields we've replaced over the last couple of years, but also the existing fields, trying to maintain those and allow them to last as long as possible. And then with that, we've got just over one point seven million dollars planned within Fund fourteen oh two. This map does show basically the fields, going back to the, there's Field Nine out at Golden Eagle Regional Park that shows what we're planning to do for this coming fiscal year. And then this next graphic just adds in the fields that have already been done, which are the gray fields, seven and eight, and then the infields of the softball fields. And then also going forward, our best look at what needs to be replaced in the future and when we're intending to do that. That will potentially change as time goes on, as we monitor those fields and we do testing on them and look at how they're handling all the use out there, but this is our best guess as of right now. Next, the Park District Funds, Fund fourteen oh six, fourteen oh seven and fourteen oh eight. These are funded through residential construction tax. And this map shows just a reminder of basically where those park districts are located. Of course, Park District One is located just west of a line of basically East McCarran Boulevard up through Sparks Boulevard. And then Park District Two is to the east of that same line. And then, of course, Park District Three is up in North Sparks. This next slide basically just adds in what we're planning to do for projects within each of those park districts. Park District One, we've been fortunate with the construction in downtown, the downtown area that we've got a little bit more funding available and trying to maintain those parks that are really important to the core area of Sparks. We've got the Opio tennis court surface replacement, Deer Park shade structure replacement, and also the Deer Park play structure replacement projects. And then over in Park District Two, we're looking at the Pawara Dog Park. We've, of course, reallocated this fund. We had it in there last year and then looked at it and found there were a few more items that we needed to add into this project. So I think this will be a great place for people to go and allow them to enjoy their pets and go out and enjoy the parks that we have around here, or enjoy Pawara Park in that area. And then we've got Bodega Park Playground Replacement up in Park District Three that we're planning on doing. The next fund is Victorian Square Room Tax Fund fourteen fifteen. This, of course, is funded through the room taxes throughout the city of Sparks through the different hotels that we have here. And we've got the next section that we're planning on doing for downtown Victorian is for the Victorian Square Infrastructure Improvements, it is Section Four. And then I'll have a map here showing that general location here in a second. We've got Phase Two Barricade Project, which will be a continuation of what Amber's working on right now. That should be hopefully be completed here pretty soon. And then the design of the Nugget Events Center Streetscape Project, as we looked at Section actually two B, which is just about complete right now. We looked at that area right in front of the Nugget Events Center and thought that would be a great opportunity to maybe do something a little bit different there. So we're going to look at designing that area of Victorian this coming fiscal year with hopefully the construction following that in the next year. So this is an overview map of the sections, not only what we've completed, which is the gray areas, but also what we're planning on doing, which is kind of the purplish, magenta color over on the west side of Victorian, that's Section Four. We have kind of skipped the main Victorian Square corridor area just because of all the construction that's going on and potentially going to be going on in the future. So we're trying to make sure we're not digging up the ground twice and just doing the best with the planning that we have there. And then, so that's downtown Victorian. The next one here is just a picture of what we did last year, right in front of the Nugget Events, or right in front of the Nugget Building on the south side of Victorian. Got the tree planters replaced, a little bit of turf, and then replacing pavers and concrete. It just really opened up that space, and I know a couple of events we had last year, we had a lot of comments that it really was a lot better for the configuration of what they set up and for the crowds that go through there. So very happy with how that turned out. The next one, redevelopment area one, Fund thirty four oh one. This is funded through property taxes within that redevelopment area. Currently, we're doing the design of the Avenue of the Oaks straightening project. This is for the construction of that project to basically go through and realign that road and provide more usable space and help with the development that's going down there so that we can make sure that we're maximizing the usage of that area. And then lastly, we're just going to touch on the Motor Vehicle Fund, Fund seventeen oh two, which is funded through cost recovery of vehicles and equipment for all the departments within the city of Sparks. And just to touch on some of the major equipment that Ron's actually looking at replacing. We've got twelve vehicles for the Police Department, one light fire vehicle, thirteen vehicles for the Community Services Department, which includes one sweeper and two ten wheeler dump trucks with a plow and a sander. And then also for the Fire Department, the initial payment for a Rosenbauer platform truck. This does, by paying this upfront, we're actually getting some cost savings from this company to, to pay for this truck upfront. And then the next slide just shows basically some pictures of kind of the examples of the major equipment that is proposed to be replaced this coming fiscal year. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions along with Amber and Rich and Kevin or anybody else that you might have questions for.
Questions or comment? I don't see any.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Too easy on me here.
Who's next?
Really, that's, that's it. We're, you know, we're not asking you to take any, any action here today. This was really provided to you as information. I know that we've thrown a lot at you. So, you know, it's really, it's your meeting from here. If there are additional questions that you have, please, please ask them. But that's from a staff perspective. I think we're out of things to say.
Ron, I have a quick question.
Right, Christopher.
Is there ever a conversation about putting on our CIP the ability to have internet in our parks? It seems like we have a lot of people out and about. That's kind of one of the things that's kind of happening in a lot of other cities that I know of, that I travel to. And I make a resource so people have that out there. Is that even a conversation or ever thought about?
That is something that we've looked at in the past. It's more about basically security of our system and how much do we provide to the, to the public? So we have looked at that, particularly out at Golden Eagle Regional Park, and we may venture into that in the near future, but we just don't have anything on there currently.
Can be something I think would be a worthwhile thing. I mean, there's a lot of conversations when we go to our things across the board of just the, the ability for all people to have internet. And some people don't have that on their own because of their cost or whatever. And so it becomes something that, that is, that is, it's becoming more and more of an infrastructure issue than just something that's nice, just something to think about in the future.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Charlene.
Um, Brian, I was wondering on the redevelopment, redevelopment District Two, there are no, it's not showing any capital projects for, from twenty one through twenty five. I know with redevelopment area one, we've got to spend that money because the district is soon to end. But are there any, is there just nothing we, we need right now? Is it something that we come back next year and, and that would be adjusted? I mean, we're five years out, and do we just not know what things we could possibly need at the time? I don't know why that had no projects identified in redevelopment.
Yeah, so when I, I was going through this, I was talking to finance about this, and we haven't been putting that in there in the past, years past. And I, we did notice, or I noticed that there was a substantial amount of money in that fund. So I felt it was important to show, show that to you. We do have potential for projects in the future in that fund. We just didn't have any plan for this year, but, but there is a substantial amount of money in there. It depends on, I mean, there's a lot of different factors that are involved in that, but the fund is building up and we'll be looking at projects going into the future.
Okay, so we could see that next year, next year, the following years, we look forward to the following fiscal years. We might see it next year on the CIP.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So Neil.
Yes.
So what I'm gathering from this presentation, this is your wish list. Obviously, we don't know what our revenues are going to be for next year. With the businesses I've been talking to, they're off anywhere from fifty percent to ninety percent. The marijuana industry, believe it or not, is off fifty to seventy percent, which is surprising. So I'm assuming just for the public's knowledge, we're, we're not planning on spending all this money if we don't have it. We're just, we're going to spend what we can, but I'm sure they're the priority in all of this.
That is, that is very much the case, Councilmember Lawson. You know, this is, this is a budget document. Your phrase of wishlist is a, is a good way for, for us to look at it. And as we come into, you know, trying to manage our own fiscal house, so to speak, while we want to, you know, be able to put as much money, you know, into the community's infrastructure as possible, we do have to be cognizant of what are going to be declining revenues in the next fiscal year. So we will be picking and choosing what we move forward with and certainly coming to, you know, you and the, and the balance of the council, you know, seeking those, you know, those decisions, you know, making recommendations to you, you know, as we've spoken. We're, you know, we're talking about core services and, and, you know, if we need to make cuts, where are they going to come? Certainly a large, a large chunk of any, any, any cut program that we carry forward to implement is going to lean into the series of funds that we talked to you about today.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on then. Let me get back to where I was. Okay, I'll open up the public comment. Any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we don't have any outside participation for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Um, comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the council and city manager.
Ron, I'll just say.
Go ahead, Christopher.
I say out loud to the staff, I know that you guys have worked really hard on putting this together for. It does, it's not just a document and just not a budget document. It is something that you guys put a lot of time and effort into and uh. Just, I don't know, I just want to encourage the staff that we will do all we can. That needs to be done, but we hope to get back where some of our normal things are back in place. And so good job and uh. And to getting out of this season into the next, but uh, thank you for putting it together.
Thank you. Thank you, Gosman.
I'll agree.
Ron, I I just wanted to say thank you to staff too. Thank you for all your hard work and uh, the hard work ahead. We got a lot of work ahead of us as we uh, navigate these new waters and I know that um, I have complete confidence in our staff and our team. Uh, but thank you, all of you.
It goes for me, me as well. Um, anybody else? Okay, seeing no further comments from the council, we are adjourned. I'll see you at two o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Hey, this, Rich, do you want to try to get my, so I can unmute myself because that's kind of a pain in the butt? You're muted.
I'll tell you what, Councilmember Darryl, I'll give you a call real quick. Let me see if I have your cell number or home number where we got there.
And so you guys know at the end, when we're all talking, they ended up leaving the question sign.